Morning, everybody.
Morning.
October the 25th, it's about 9:06 a.m. Regular main Liberty County Commissioners Court. We do have business for the court this morning. We have a core of established Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire is our president. Commissioner Wilson is zooming in today. So everybody's here. First things first, Lee, if you would lead us in our pledges and then Matthew, lead us in our indication this morning.
Please face the American flag.
And in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one in the world.
Y'all, please praise you. Father God, we come to you and we just thank you so much for this beautiful morning. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Liberty County. Father God, we ask that you would give us all the humility to serve, to listen to others, to come together so that we can achieve the common good. We pray in this in your holy name, Father God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Well, this morning, we don't have any notices or proclamations, and we have no public comment. Nobody signed up today, so. All righty. Any conflicts of interest to declare today? Oh, here it is. Okay. Let's move to the consent agenda. Dwayne, you have anything that you need to add on?
I want to add three travel advances. Lloyd Dunville, $1,555.70. Miss Cannon, $170. And Gabriella Weeden, $170.
Kim, yes?
I don't have anything to add to the agenda. I just got a couple of announcements next week on the first, second, and third. Again, opening all the meetings.
Oh, yeah.
And the forms will be on paper, on paper forms for an all but this year. Those will be back, due back in our office by November 10. The other announcement I have is that October 21st, Monday, Helene is the last day to turn in. Sicily.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and where will the summits be held? The summits?
We sent out a schedule, like a recommended schedule and locations. The bulk of the meetings will be in Judge Harris's courtroom. Yeah, so everybody can come out and see his move.
Could be, I just want everybody to hear that there at the new annex. Okay, all right. Good deal.
There's something Cleveland, too.
Yeah.
I make a move that we're perfectly considered agenda with the items that Mr. God has.
Yeah, motion from Greg. Second from Bruce to free with the additions. All favor say aye.
Leon needs to unmute. Need to unmute. Okay.
You're muted.
He put his hand over.
Okay, thank you. How's the coffee this morning?
That's not coffee, brother.
Okay. I might want to come join you. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, regular agenda. Permits inspections from David Douglas, Northern Engineering. Consider and approve the final plat for Alley Farms subdivision.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Pretty straightforward. This is a little small subdivision that's being developed off of 1960. Right now, it'll start out with about 10 lots. This is a custom builder. He develops his own subdivision, and then he builds the houses in the subdivision. So he double bits. His name is James Collet. Most of you will know him through his father-in-law, Jack Humph.
Okay.
So this is on some acres that Mr. Trump belongs. I believe County Road, J. Hilton, he's 604.
Yeah.
Played us for it. So we've gone through the full evaluation of subdivision. OJA has provided their approval letter. Gets enclosed. We'll ask you to approve the final plat for Alley Farms.
Okay. Leon, you had a chance to look at it? There you go.
I said, yeah, I don't have any objections to it.
Okay. All right, well, it's in your precinct. I just want to check, make sure. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from David over here. Okay, so need a second.
Second.
Second from Bruce. He's kind of on the silent side, but yeah, but it's in my bad ear, but I still call it. Yeah, motion from David seeking for Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two for Mr. Douglas. Consider and approve the GLO draw request number seven for housing buyout program in the amount of $95,000.
Mr. Wilson, are you still with us?
Yes.
I'll drop that, I'll drop that final plat by your office for execution, and then Karen can call me. I'll pick it up after it gets done. Okay?
Okay. You delivered it yesterday?
Didn't.
You delivered yesterday?
No, sir, I'll deliver it today.
Okay.
Item two, this is a GLO draw only. We're still trying to work out the fine print with the auditor's office on how we're going to pay closing payments. So for right now, we're going to just not do any payment. Angela and Dwayne are working out a payment process, and we will get this thing done. For now, this is a GLO draw only, and it's in the amount of $95,000, and this is in the housing buyout program in Mr. Arthur's precinct.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Greg, second from David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank y'all. Number three. Consider and approve the first amendment to the interlocal agreement between Liberty County and City of Dayton and reinvestment zone number one. City of Dayton, for the purpose of extending the term of the reinvestment zone from 2043 to 2048. If y'all remember back, this is that Gulf Inland Terres that we approved. And what has happened? Make a long story short, give me a best reader's digest version. Gulf Inland was owned by McCoury Bank when we first started this. Well, they sold. They sold to a development group, which is good. They will actually do something with the property.
Yes, they will.
Yeah. So they wanted to see if we could go back and hit the stopwatch again since it really, something is going to happen now. And I did discuss it with them. I was, I'm in favor of it that I think what we're going to see happening is some really fast motion out there for industrial development, which is what we need, which is one thing that might create some necessity on the behalf of transportation side of things, if you know what I'm talking about. I won't go into depth on that, but this is, this is one of those kind of things that could feed the county and be in a specific location where the amenities are already there. And I'm all for it. See if you can. Okay?
Judge?
Yeah.
I'd like to add, too, because of what's taken place in the sale, that the court needs to be aware that we've, we already have a lot of excellent prospects that's going to benefit not only precinct four, but also Liberty County.
Well, the City of Dayton, the ISD, the county and the precinct. I mean, that's, that's pretty much the stakeholders that are involved on.
Correct.
You know, the taxing entity side especially. And that's what we need to really focus on. It's about time.
Yes, it is. I make the motion we approve.
Got a motion, Leon, second from David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four. Consider and approve grant in the amount of $50,000 from the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation to be distributed as follows. We got $15,000 to the Chris Initiative Meals on Wheels. $15,000 to Cleveland Senior Citizens Corporation. $10,000 to Liberty County Housing Authority for fire loss recipients. $5,000 to Dayzetta Neat Incorporated. And $5,000 to Harden Helping Hands Incorporated. The total of $50,000 passed through grant is, well, it's explained there. And this is the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation. Mr. Bush sits on that board. He just re-upped for another, what, four years? Okay. So he, he went after this and, and got it for us. And that's very appreciated.
Second.
Got a motion, David, second from Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five. Consider and approve payment to the whole freshwater district for the ARPA funds not to exceed $1 million for the purpose of helping with upgrades to their community water well. Now, I want y'all to pay attention to this where it says for the, not to exceed a million dollars. So this could be from $1 to $1 million. Okay? It's widespread. But, you know, we did help Harden. We did help Ames. And then Hull and Dayzetta have both been having their, their problems with their freshwater distribution system. Dayzetta really has none, but so Hull takes care of that with a freshwater district, and they're needing to drill another well. So it, it's an opportunity, but yet we still don't know the full amount that they need. I'm sure if we say it's a million dollars, they'll take a million dollars. I mean, that's just, you know, don't ever tell the contractor how much money you have in your, your bank account, right? But the other side of it is, you know, we still have another entity that we're looking at helping, which was Tri-County, you know, on the mental health side. So I'm okay with this. If y'all are okay with this, it is a necessity, and they do need help.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion for Bruce, second from David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six for Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarthy. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Exile Leo for the use of a 780-foot section of County Route 602 located in precinct four of Liberty County, Texas, exchange for a one-time payment of $52,000. And if y'all want to know exactly where this is, the old guy jeans ranch at the very end of 602, right, Leon?
Correct. 602 and 6026.
Yeah. And a part of this solar farm is going to be in Harris County Park. It's going to be in Liberty County. We're just worried about the portion of the road that's in Liberty County. And Leon got with the, with the folks, and they came up with a scope and estimate of what the, well, what the damages might be. And this is what everyone seems to be in agreement on. Is that okay, $52,000?
Correct.
I believe there might be 52,200. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, 52. It was actually Matthew, 52,200.
Yes, sir. Exactly. 52,200.
All right, let's make that correction. And I'm thinking that they're going to start on this, Leon, in December?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Changing the amount to 5200, $50,000 to 52,200.
Okay. Cash motion for Bruce. Going once, going twice. Second from David. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Number seven for Mr. Gott, our county auditor. Consider and approve the county auditor's office seeking a grant for the Veterans Treatment Court to cover the cost of a coordinator and supplies. It is what it is, right? Pretty much it. Okay.
Make a motion we approve.
Motion Leon, saving David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Number eight for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve renewal of annual interlocal agreement with the City of Keneffick. And that's just?
This is just the standard, generic, interlocal.
Interlocal. Got a motion from David.
Second.
Second from Bruce. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine for Mr. Poston. Well, we're wearing you out today, aren't we? Yeah.
Just getting started.
All right. Consider and approve renewal of interlocal agreement with City of Keneffick for the maintenance of city streets. And that?
Now, this is a specific one that authorizes us to actually maintain, not rebuild from the foundation up, but to maintain the top of the road more or less.
Okay.
Make a motion we approve.
Motion Leon, saving David to approve. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 10 for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve contract with Tyler for Teams training product that will provide bundled training for County Tyler users.
I put this on with Lee. She knows more about it, but my understanding is that there's multiple tiers of training packages. They come in, I can't remember what unit they use. I was calling units, but I do think it's a great idea. We have, you know, part of being efficient is also training the new folks that come in, making sure the current users stay up to date with the software. But I cannot address funding. I'm not sure if that's been discussed yet.
Have anybody discussed the funding of this?
I think you said the 10-hour one. That's what he said. But I don't remember what it is in the packet.
That's included with the current fees, isn't it, Lee?
It's, it was part of our original contract that we would have training available every year for new people coming in and new products being rolled out, and that's what this is. And I think they were saying the minimum was 10 hours, and I don't remember the amount. I want to say maybe 10,000, but it would be for whoever needs, 15,000?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's 10 units of service.
So 10 hours of, of training. It would be for who needs it. I think we talked about a couple of offices that are behind and need some hands-on training. That's what it would be for, is my understanding from the meeting we had.
So where's the money coming from?
The Tyler money.
There's no more Tyler level.
There's not in next week?
It's the 2019 tax laws.
Hey, Dwayne?
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like back then that the training fees were involved in the current fees.
I think the initial training fees were involved.
Yeah, I'll bet the annual training is, just, yeah, just the original training implementation.
And I'm not trying to, I won't be the devil's advocate here. I know software and, but I became county auditor in 2015. Our software maintenance fees were in the neighborhood of $280,000 what we paid. And this year, we're going to be $900,000.
Million dollars.
Well.
All I can say is if you're not trained on the software, you can't use it. And this was something that was supposed to be a regular yearly deal. I wasn't around, I wasn't a part of the original negotiations. They just said, here's your, you know, thing for the next year. They asked me who I thought needed training. I said the judge's bench and maybe some district clerks. They're adding on some free software layers that we're going to be utilizing, but I think that's a separate deal. This is really just for people who need more training and more assistance with their implementation in their offices. So it could be in your office, Dwayne. It's just 10 hours of training that we can access, so.
But basically, where's the money coming from? I can't, I mean, it's, I know it may be needed, but if we don't have the money budgeted, I don't see how we can just keep spending on this Tyler or anything else.
Perhaps the court would consider taking, we discuss any possible source of funding from that court.
I'll make a motion to table.
Can we get some more answers, Gus?
Okay. Motion from Bruce to table, second from David, which is a great idea. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Excellent for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve subordination agreement with Fairfield Dayton Parks LP regarding a CDBG grant, you know, community development block grant, grant. Okay, this Fairfield Dayton Parks.
Yes. So as y'all are aware, Dayton Park is being bought out by Fairfield.
Yeah.
We were here, I think about six weeks ago, a month ago with a consent to the purchase. We had to give consent to that happen, but we did that. Now, they've finally got through some financing and portions of it. The financing company will not agree unless it's clear in writing that they have the ability to foreclose. She's something happened online. So I don't have any problems with this, but it was a separate document that I need to bring back to court.
So you're good with it, Matthew?
I am, yes.
Good.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion Leon, second from Greg to approve. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 12 for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve notice of termination of contract with PlanSource with the exception of preparation of the annual 1095 forms. And?
This is just part and parcel to moving over to our new provider. I will be sending these out personally, but I had to obtain.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13 for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve notice of termination contract with Discover Benefits, Wex Health for Cobra Administration. Still part of the same plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from David. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 14. Consider and approve notice of termination for contract with Discovery Benefits. Oops. Yep. Discovery Benefits, Wex Health for the cafeteria plan. Okay, I got you.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion Bruce, second from Greg. All favor say aye. That carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 15. Consider and approve notice of termination for the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for medical dental vision stop-loss, basic and voluntary life insurance, and the voluntary short-term disability insurance products. And this still, we're just cleaning house from one provider to the next, correct?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg to approve. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 16 for Mr. Poston. Consider and approve amendment of the employee handbook to require 30-day notice of loss of coverage or life event for special enrollment.
So our, all the materials that we send out to employees, retirees requires only 30 days' notice. Our handbook required longer. So we're just asking to align the handbook to what we're notifying everyone.
Make a motion to approve.
Matthew, go more, if you don't mind, go in a little bit more detail in what this is.
Oh, sure. So as I think most employees are aware, the only way to change your coverage at a dependent or remove coverage outside of the open enrollment period is to have one of these major life events occur. Maybe your spouse loses her insurance. You have to pick her, pick her up here at the county or vice versa, or, you know, a new baby or, you know, any number of situations like that. Our handbook has been requiring 60 days' notice of those. So you would have to notify within 60 days of an event like that to be able to specially enroll. But all the materials that we actually give the employees other than employee handbook say 30. So we're just asking to align them. That's all.
Okay.
What happens, Matthew? As an example, if your spouse company has notified them that they'll be shutting the doors in two weeks, would that still fall, be beneficial for the employees?
So you would have 30 days after they shut, shut the doors.
Okay.
I am paying special.
Okay. All right, we got a motion for Bruce. Second from Leon to accept. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 17 from Sheriff Rader. Consider and approve transfer of a white 2011 Chevy Tahoe then number one GNLC2EO3BR246636 from the Liberty County Sheriff's Office to Liberty County Constable Precinct Four.
Yes, sir. Constable's office called, and they were down without any vehicles. They needed anything, and we had anything vehicle that we could give to them that we were used to despair.
Okay.
Just asking permission to transfer over.
Yes. Got a motion, David to approve. Second from Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 18 for my line barker, our tax attorney. Consider and approve bids on delinquent tax properties as follows. Number one was Charles Carrington and D Price, their bid number 35288 for $1,500. Number two was Jay Hernandez, property ID number 17447 for $6,500. And number three was S. Payne, property ID numbers 45446 for $10,000.
Yeah, I've looked at all three of these, seen the problems except for these bids. I make a motion to approve, one, two, and three.
Motion for Bruce, second from David to approve. All favor say aye. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 19 for Mr. Gott. Consider, set, and approve fiscal year 2023 land acquisition budget. I'll just give you a brief history. You know, we first, in 2015, we just didn't have enough money for the precincts to operate and for road materials. And we had the opportunity to use some of the land acquisition fund and, you know, distribute it equally among the precincts, bought more road materials, which made good sense. And there was not that much land acquisition that had been going on. Now, I mean, I remember back, what was it, two years ago, three years ago, Dwayne? Tex dot came to us and said, we need $255,000 as part of your contribution to a land acquisition for Highway 59 and 69 and outside of Cleveland. And we had to ante up $255,000. We had actually signed a note with him for a five-year term since we didn't have any money in the land acquisition fund to pay it. Okay? And it generates roughly around $300,000 a year, if I'm not mistaken. And we always distribute it out to the precincts because they need it. They need it. Now, the other side of it is, I don't know what's on the horizon currently with Tex dot where we might have to contribute again. I would like the opportunity to let you roll over what you currently have in this account and stop the next go-around for this year until we get a good vision from Tex dot. If we have any projects we're going to have to contribute to because we dig money out of contingency, special projects that we need that money for other things and not for land acquisition. And this is what this is for. That's my spiel. Okay, it would, let's just keep what you got, roll it over. Don't take anything this year until we have the opportunity to talk with Tex dot and find out if there's anything on the horizon that's going to cost us.
Well, we should have probably jumped on Tex dot before we ever come to this conclusion.
Well.
Well, I know we have a, I know we have new personnel there. I speak with them on occasions, and they're still just at this point. occasions, and they're still just at their point in time, trying to get their feet in the water.
Well, you're right. Uh, they got a new DE. They got a new assistant DE.
Yep.
We have a new resident engineer.
Yep.
Uh, the old road, uh, the old bridge guy just left and went to, uh, Orange, City of Orange.
Yep.
Uh, that's Adam Jack. He went to the City of Orange. He's now there. Uh, let's see. Working for them as their engineer at City of Orange. I mean, there's big, big turnover. I'd just like the opportunity to look at it and sit down with Text Dot and say, what do y'all have coming down the road? I don't want to get embarrassed and say, I'm sorry, guys, I don't have any money, you know, and, and then there you are. But I know we have some projects that, uh, could affect this that are up in, uh, shooting roads over, thoroughfares over from, uh, fifty-nine over to three twenty-one. There's another project that's down south of Dayton that would, um, potentially run from, uh, fourteen oh nine, uh, and go east across the river in time with five sixty-three.
That year from now, though, correct?
Yeah, but the other side of it is, if you don't get the land acquisition now.
Yeah. Probably what will happen before that ever occurs, we, uh, uh, we may be, we may not even be breathing, but that's a good ways off. The point I'm making is this.
We're also, we're also widening ninety from Deverys into Liberty, that letters are going, going out to individuals for service.
As I was saying, excuse me, Mr. Kowski. At this point, our land acquisition has, as I said, each and every commissioner sitting here, it not only, not only helps with, um, um, road materials, but other things such as equipment, parts, repairs, vehicles that we ordinarily wouldn't be having. If it hadn't been for land acquisition this last budget, I would have been in a, in a big bind because of all the price increases that occurred. All the information that I get now, there's nothing, nothing's gonna come back down. Matter of fact, we're gonna see more price increases. And without this, this money, uh, the people of Liberty County and people precinct four are gonna be suffering the consequences.
At some point, we gotta quit spending money out of the land acquisition fund. We're going to, at this point, I make a motion that we roll over what's in our budget now and stop taking money out of land acquisition.
Well, let me add something to that. At least give us an opportunity to have a workshop with Text Dot.
If we just, once we do that, if we decide to do that, we can come back and.
Okay.
Do that.
I mean, don't close the book on it yet. I'm just, I'm saying.
We're, we're gonna close the book on it, but we can open the book back up after we have a workshop if we want to.
You're gonna roll over what you have now.
No, I'm saying that.
But we're gonna have a workshop first with Text Dot and find out if there's anything on the horizon that we need to be aware of, where we need to contribute. And I don't.
No, no, I wanna make my motion.
I just don't, I don't have a, a problem, you know, with distributing this at all. It's, it's always worked well in the past. I just want to find out what is coming down the road that maybe we hadn't seen.
I don't want six months now to borrow five hundred thousand dollars. So.
Yeah.
Can buy it right away.
Well. I would say.
We had to borrow two hundred fifty-seven.
Yeah, we did that. But we're in our third year with that one, you know? Thank goodness. I would really like to, you know, roll over what you have. Hold up on the distribution that you're currently seeking until we have an opportunity to get with Text Dot and see if there's anything out there. We'll come back and revisit it. If they say there's nothing there, then go ahead and distribute it as we've done in the past. If not, uh, they say that we have, you know, a project that's, you know, we're gonna have to contribute a million dollars to, you know, whatever. I have no idea what's out there. They've had so much turnover at Text Dot Beaumont. We really don't know who all the players are.
And we really don't know what all they got in plan.
And I mean, if we have a meeting with them in a month from now, and we decide we wanna do that, we put it back on there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that, that will, uh, that will settle with me.
Okay.
So we have a motion in the second.
So I got a motion from Bruce to.
Yeah, motion from Greg, second.
Motion from Greg. Okay, let me get it right. Greg, same from Bruce. And what we're gonna do is go ahead and roll over what you currently have into your budget.
It will stop.
And we'll stop the payment until we have a workshop. Yeah. That sound okay, Leon?
That's, that's bound with me. Let's try to schedule this meeting as soon as possible.
Okay. All right. Got a motion in the second. All favor say aye. Likewise, no. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We don't have any reason for you to take a session today, do we, Matthew?
We actually do.
Well, we do. Yeah.
One, one item for regarding a solar farm, uh, in the.
Yeah.
Proposal for three.
Okay. Well.
Motion going to executive session.
Got a motion going to six, thank Bruce, same with Leon. All favor say aye. All right, we're gonna go on executive session. Let's try to get out of. All right, ten eighteen, we're back in regular session. And, uh, the executive session was for just discussion only. There's no action to be taken. So therefore I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
David beat, David beat me.
I'm gonna get that into Leon. Yeah, you're loud enough. Yeah. All favor say aye. All right, we adjourn.